...States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Hope there's a bigger crowd at home than there is here.
I will tell you, I'll tell you, this is kinda strange doing this pledge of allegiance 'cause when I was a kid, that's what we used to do here.
Oh.
No, I never realized I'd be coming back to school again.
Hey, we're gonna start the meeting off. Liz Moulton isn't here today, so I'm John Martin, and I'm gonna fill in his chair tonight. We're gonna have to jump around here a little till 6:30, so why don't we start with the Select Board Updates Liaison Reports on 2B. Charlie, do you have anything?
Uh, well, George, come on in.
Hello?
Well, you can sit down.
I'm getting prepared.
We'll get prepared. Good, good. The Fire Department, as you know, reported the fact that the ambulance back into full service again. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
So hopefully that's behind us now, as we move forward. Police Department, you know about the manpower problems and issues with that. And I have nothing for the Highway Department. Working with the Select Board, I'm trying to get bids for the heating units for the attic, for the roof, getting bids on the safety rail for the sidewalk in front of the building, and I've been working with the installation of the handicapped or automated doors, and they had to backorder those doors. My hope is, within a month, that they get in.
They had to backorder the whole doors, or just the bars?
One door, because of the fact that it, we're reversing the hinges on it and all that, so that got backordered, and being summertime with people on vacation, it just sorta... So...
So what was the ETA again?
I'm hoping within the next month.
Okay.
But in the next four weeks, this gets installed.
Okay, great.
And the heating stuff, we're basically getting quotes right now, and then we gotta figure out where we're gonna fund that. The handrail, again, we're waiting on quotes. I've had a couple of contractors look it over, and they're working on the quotes, but again, it's summertime.
So by the fall?
Yeah, yeah, that's the hope.
Good. Anything else?
That's about it.
Jackie, you're on the CPC?
Yes, sir. I was happy, I am happy to report that the Conservation Committee and the Community Preservation Committee has agreed to allow the Kneed family to place an interpretive kiosk on the Zipta Farm in his honor. Sadly, he was hurt, he was killed, when he collided with a bear on Southampton Road. So in light of this terrible accident, we're gonna honor him with a kiosk on the Zipta Farm, and it'll be trail and also nature, wildlife information in the sign.
Is that a year-round kiosk, or...?
Well, not in the winter, we're not gonna, you know...
Close it up?
Yeah, but, you know, in the other part of the year. And then also, I have nothing on the zoning board. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, myself, the Greenway Negotiating Committee, and the MPI, there's nothing to report since the last meeting. And since Shannon's not here, we may be able to go back to it later. Okay, uh, is anybody from the public here to talk? Okay, so we can come back to that later if anybody else shows up. Reports from departments, boards, and committees. I'm not seeing anybody wants to do that either, so we can pass that over. Okay, let's go down to 4A, something we normally do. Everybody is on a committee, on the board, some of us are on a couple of committees, and it looks like all the committees are pretty well filled up, but is there anybody that wants to make an amendment to their current liaison standing? Anybody wanna switch a committee, or is everybody happy with where they are?
I'm good, thank you.
Jackie's good?
I believe it is.
Okay, good. So we're not making any changes. 4B, dissolution of the Public Safety Committee Complex. At a prior board meeting, Charlie requested the Board of Selectmen consider dissolving the PSC Committee for the time being, let things settle down for a while before trying again. So does the board wish to dissolve the Public Safety Committee Complex at this time?
Do we do that?
Do you want one second?
One second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Okay. So any other thoughts from last time, or just wanna let it rest for a while and...
Well, given the fact that the voters didn't wanna spend the money, and given the fact that it appears like there was comment made that the committee was going in the direction that the general population wasn't pleased with, I felt the best thing to do is to close this down, thank everybody for all their time, and then reintroduce this late fall, early winter, and try to get some new faces in here, and see if we can approach it a different way. The reality is, we need it, but I think we need to put some closure on this right now.
Okay. Jackie?
No, I totally agree, and I think that we should go back to the drawing board and get three bids and make them public, and bring the public through the whole thing. A little, you know, so it's more transparent, although it was great, and Charlie did an excellent job, and thank you for everything you did, but maybe if we just bring the public more into the whole process.
Okay.
Though you did.
Yeah, we can't get three bids until we have designs and all that.
Right, I mean, but we, you know, at least bring the public in more, so that they know where we are in each step as we go.
Yeah, I can't speak to the committee and the public, but I think, pretty much, since I got on it a couple months, several months ago, as the public was invited and people came, if they wanted to come, so... But anyways, I don't disagree. I think let it rest for a while, and maybe when we reconstitute the committee, we can find out from people on the, from the public who's involved, wants to be involved with it, and assign some of them on there. But I think as a board, we should, you know, thank Charlie and the rest of the board for all the work they did, because it was over, what, a three-year period or so, Charlie?
Actually, more than that.
More than that, so thank you from the board, Charlie, and to the rest of the committee.
Would it be possible for the Select Board to send a letter to the committee members?
Yep. I think we can, we'll be happy to do that, and we can sign it. Heather, can we do that? Okay, you got it?
Yes.
Hi. Okay, we're on 4C, Procedures for Conducting Dog Hearings. As discussed at prior board meetings, we've had numerous hearings we need to hold regarding, we need to hold regarding dogs. This doesn't sound right.
We don't always prove read.
Yeah. So anyways, in order to move forward, Heather would like us to review the dog policy hearing in our packets and adopt the policy. As we've done in the past, we plan to read each line, which I believe is gonna be projected up on the screen, so we ask the board to add comments and adjustments as we proceed, so at the end, we can decide if we wish to adopt the policy or not.
Just need one second. Gotta click the right button.
And after the next one, we'll get back to you. That way you can stay or go if you want.
Shh, it's my dogs.
I think the idea of projecting it is great, so people at home will be able to see it too.
It's my town button. Fantastic.
Yeah, I see, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Procedure for conducting dog hearings, that's what we're doing right now, on the policy.
Okay, so that is not the same as the... I thought you were talking about the dog.
It's all this.
Yeah, so the policy is, and it's right under.
Okay, good, perfect, thank you.
Okay, so we have it up here? So I'm gonna read this, so bear with me. Procedure for conducting dog hearings. Written complaint must be filed with the Board of Selectmen. The complaint shall provide their name, address, and contact information. The complaint should describe and name the dog and fully identify the owner. The complaint should further specify why and how the dog is considered to be vicious. The complaint shall provide a list of all individuals that may have knowledge of the issue. Specify all times, dates, and reasons. Upon receipt of a request for a hearing, the hearing will be included in the agenda for a regular meeting. The town administrator will notify the animal control officer and all involved parties, persons. Hearing will be held in open session. The procedure for conducting a hearing is as follows. Read the complaint, fully identify and describe dog, present picture when available. Note the hearing is being conducted under Chapter 140 of the Mass General Laws. Two, swear in the complainant that all information and statements are the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. Three, hear reports from animal control officer and/or health agent and/or animal inspector. Make sure that dogs are fully identified here. Take testimony from complainants. Directly question as to why dog is considered vicious or dangerous. Are they fearful of the dog? Is there excessive barking, et cetera? Heather, can you scroll?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I was looking at my hard copy.
Okay. Five, take testimony from owner and/or other speaking on his behalf. Six, at the conclusion of the hearing, the board may render its decision, or take the matter under advisement, announcing the intended date of decision. And seven, unless requested by the board, the dog shall not attend the hearing.
I like that.
I'm just reading, folks. Okay, so does the board wish to discuss it, or a motion to adopt the policy? How do you wanna go with it?
I'd like a motion to just adopt the policy. We have a number of people that have complaints that need to be heard.
So adopt it as written?
As written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? I'm fine with it, I think it's pretty straightforward. So take a motion to adopt the policy? And we got a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So next is 4C2, Adoption of Purchase Order Policy. Heather, Vicki, and Donna have met to formalize the previously presented flowchart for purchase orders. Are there any comments or feedback from the board? Vicki, do you have any comments that you want to?
I don't necessarily read the whole thing, but I have requested information that my office might need to better process the bill, but it doesn't seem to be a concern, so...
So are you acquiescing and going along with it, or...
See what happens.
Okay, so you wanna...
I just requested that my office get some more information in order to process the bills, but it just isn't...
Hold your microphone.
You know, whatever, it's...
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, you need to go to the...
No, it's fine.
Thank you. Now, people at home can't hear.
The problem becomes, it's very difficult and time-consuming for Joyce to look at every single invoice, granted, it's only the ones that are over $2,500, to look on the invoice itself to figure out where the purchase order number is. My request was, can we have a copy of the purchase order when someone pays that bill? Because it's less time-consuming, you have it right in front of you, you know whether it's fully paid or it's not fully paid.
And what was the reason for not putting that in?
It's too difficult for other people to make copies and give them to us, apparently.
Are the purchase orders, are hard copy purchase orders?
They are.
And they're new, who makes them out? Heather, you make them all out?
Yeah, what happens is a department head will fill out an Excel sheet, and based on this policy, what would happen is, at that point, once it's submitted to me, I would print out their approved purchase order that's in the system, they would get a copy of the purchase order, and the vendor would have a copy. So when the vendor submits the bill to be paid, it actually has a written purchase order on the bill. As I've suggested to the accountant's office, I'm more than happy to print out a weekly report of any purchase orders that are currently in play. Usually, it's no more than three to five any given time of the year. We've actually talked about not doing open purchase orders, so that they're just specifically per purchase, so that it gets rid of the confusion. One of the concerns we've addressed, or we've heard in the past from department heads, is that it's more burdensome for them, once they get the bill, to now hunt down the purchase order and start making additional copies and attach it. We thought, in the meeting, that perhaps it would be easier with Joyce having copies of the purchase orders and right in front of her, if she only had three to five to look for. It's one person, it's gotta go through her anyway, and it's much quicker for her to say whether or not something has a purchase order or not with the list in front of her. She'll have the amounts and everything, it's already in the system, and she'll know. We felt it was more burdensome for the department heads, and another thing to hear them complain about and be upset about with not having it.
Yeah, so just a thought, and I don't know if it'll go towards what you want. If you're printing off two, could you print off three and automatically give her a copy of every purchase order, so you can cross-reference it when you get the invoice in?
But the issue becomes, when you have a stack of bills this big on Monday morning that you're trying to process, it's very time-consuming to flip through all those papers to find that, to reference this purchase order, to, it's very time-consuming to do that. And when people consistently bring their bills in late, and we're trying to get them in on time to get the information, so you guys can sign them, it makes it smoother process if we have a copy attached to that bill.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. But if there's three to five a week, and the invoices that are attached to a purchase order have a purchase order number on them, if you see an invoice with purchase order 12345, can't you just go into the file and take it out? And, I mean, that's what I'm used to in the old days of purchasing. I mean, we're all computerized where I am now, but...
Yeah. You know what, it doesn't really matter what my office really requests or wants, I mean, it's easier that way for us to process the bills, and so it seems like people are always, you're giving, everyone's giving me a hard time about it. I don't understand why it's such a big deal. We're the ones who pay the bills, we're the ones who process the bills. It's very time-consuming to have to look in four files, and this paper and that paper. If you give me a bill, you want your bill paid, then you should give me all the information to pay that bill.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Or maybe I'm, you know, so if you give that, 'cause if Heather makes a copy, that department head should already have a copy in their file. You're gonna pay the bill, you give me the invoice, and you give me the cover sheet, attach the purchase order, and when you pay your bill, give it to me. It's not, but if that's, if you wanna go with this way, that's fine, we'll see what happens, and, but, I mean, it's, it's just time-consuming.
I mean, from my point of view, it doesn't seem like an unreasonable request, but what do you...
I don't have a problem with the department. The department head has to have the PO in their hand to know what the bill is anyways.
So you're saying, make a copy of it, staple it to the invoice, and send them both together?
Yes. Because the other problem that arises is, when you enter the bill into the system, you choose the purchase order number, then you have to choose whether it's fully paid or partially paid. You can tell if the purchase order's for $1,000, and the bill is for $1,000. But you have a purchase order for $1,000, and the bill's $950 and some change, or $850, I don't know whether something else is coming in or not. If you have an aggregate bill from WB Mason for a whole bunch of stuff, I can only assume that, but I don't wanna put it as fully paid, because then if they have another bill, and the purchase order number's on it, it's gonna come up, and it's not gonna be encumbered, and it's gonna end up just being a regular expense, but it's gonna take time to find out that, oh, the purchase order's already been closed.
And I think from my experience, if you get an audit, and you got the PO, and you got the invoice together...
I guess it's, it's just streamlined, and it makes it easier for us to pay the bills in a, in a more, I don't say easier, timely manner, I mean, it's just, but, that's just me, that's just what my office does.
I agree with Vicki, you know...
Jackie, what do you think?
Well, yeah, I mean... I mean, if it doesn't work, and if the, and if the department heads are having a really hard time making a copy to give me the bill, then, then we have a different issue.
You need to know what you're paying, and it needs to be more organized.
I guess I'm just of the philosophy, and, and people can prove me wrong. If you want your bills paid, you need to give me everything that you can to pay that bill. You know, you need to give me an original copy, you need to have a signed cover sheet, you need to have the account number on there, and you should have a purchase order attached to it.
So Heather, it looks like...
But that's just...
I mean, from our point of view, it makes sense to us. How difficult would it be to amend the policy, to just put it in?
It's not difficult to amend the policy. I, I can do however the board wishes. I'm just concerned, like I stated prior, that even last year when we started doing the purchase orders, a lot of the boards, or rather, departments were very concerned and thought it was very burdensome. A lot of us, or at least at my department, I have 14 different accounts that I pay on a bi-weekly basis, so once you start getting into multiple things, it's just another thing that can get lost in the mix. I understand Vicki's concern. When we discussed it, the comment, again, was that if there's one sheet of paper that lists out every single purchase order that currently exists, being three to five, and each one tells you how much money and what it's for, there's, I guess my concern, my confusion is, there's no additional information that you're gonna get in a copy of the purchase order than you're gonna get on the spreadsheet that I print out with three things listed. The purchase order, because I was asked by the accountant's office last year not to itemize things, there's no additional information, they don't get the document I got submitted to me as the Excel sheet, so they don't know four items were purchased from WB Mason. They just see WB Mason, $1,000. If you have a list in front of you, it says WB Mason Water Department, $1,000, bill comes in, purchase order number matches, it's within the range of $1,000 or less, there's no note that says, "This is a problem, please call me." Then at that point, you, when you go on the screen, you hit Pay in Full, you move forward, you're done. But it's up to the board. If, if they feel they would like each department to submit an additional sheet of paper, we can do that. It's however the board wishes to proceed.
Yeah, I mean, again, it being a procurement, to me, it's, it's an audit issue, too. You've got all the paperwork together, and somebody comes in and audits it, you can track it right back. Here's what we ordered, here's what we got, here's what we paid for, close, next one. So Shannon, you popped in, did you hear any of the conversation?
I did, and I spoke with Vicki earlier on this, and I think that, I, and I had said to her, I think the purchase order should be with the packet. I think just to keep everything all together and in order.
Okay, so it sounds like all four of us are in favor of that, so can we amend the policy to say that? Thank you.
He said if, if, you know...
Try it out.
And because I think it's $2,500, if it was $500, and there's a lot of purchase orders that came through with the $500 criteria, it's a lot more consuming for everybody, but I think the $2,500, which, you know, was Heather's suggestion for a time, for, for dollar amount, is good, so you won't have...
As many.
As many, but yet, it still needs to be traced.
Yeah, I can't see there's gonna be many anyways, $2,500 and over. So I don't, I don't think a department head's gonna have much of an issue. But again, I think that's part of their job, is department head.
Yeah, like you said, and if they have a hard time, then we can...
Yeah, we can...
But I guess, like I said, I'm of the philosophy, if you're gonna give me and want me to pay your bills and process them, I should have everything that I need to process them.
It's like a time slip. If you wanna get paid, you need to hand in a time slip.
'Cause it is time-consuming to chase everybody down for all the issues and stuff.
I guess, actually, we can stop it here, 'cause we're gonna change policy. So thanks.
John, is the board willing at this time to approve the policy pending the addition of the language, "Department heads required to make a copy and attach it to the invoice upon payment at the very end"?
Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll, I'll move.
Okay. Second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, any conversation?
I think we had the conversation.
Just wanna be sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You're all set on that, thanks. I think we're gonna keep you up there, because we have you on the agenda again here somewhere.
Was this open, or was it on the other side? Yes.
Okay, Heather, where is she on the agenda?
She's gonna be under Department Reports, it's item, the first section.
Okay, here we go.
So it's one...
2C, aye, or one. Review of the fiscal year '15 and '16 expenses and revenues. This is something that we requested at a prior board meeting to review with you the expenditures and revenues on a monthly basis at the first of the month, so this is our first time doing that, and I believe we're gonna project it up on the board.
I figured out how to do this, by the way, about 10 minutes before the meeting.
Oh, I could've told you how to put it into PDF, and you would've been able, it's not... I, I never gave a thought that I could do it, so just don't dump it to Excel, because it gives you every single column, and it's really kind of a pain.
So this is...
This is FY '15, just to let folks know.
So this is the finalized expense report for fiscal '15, or is there any more changes?
There are a few. I'm waiting for one more reconciliation from the school. And I have, I'm trying to think of what else I still have in here. Should be pretty much almost all, kinda what the numbers are right here.
And I'm not seeing anything that's really out of the ordinary, or, except for school choice tuition, but...
That is assessments by the state.
Right.
And that number, I talked to the school, and they were, that was pretty close to what they anticipated for the end of the year, even though that wasn't what was on the original cherry sheet.
Yep. So it looks like it was, all in all, a very good year-end. Any comments on, on this in general?
You know, I'm still going through all the other accounts, all the other funds, to make sure that, you know, there was nothing that was, that looks kinda out of the ordinary, and that I can, that I didn't need to correct. And I was trying to clean up some of the capital projects, based on Charlie, your and I conversation that we had about a month ago.
Yeah, we gotta sit down, I'm thinking September.
Yeah.
And then we can figure out how we're gonna present this.
Yeah, the ones that I could push back to where they came from, because they came on a stabilization, I can automatically put those back.
Yeah.
So I put those back to, to where they belong. The only piece I don't know is something that came from a sale of a real estate account, so I have to find out from the DOR, what can I do with that. So these are, are pretty close to being ready to be moved over. Like I said, I just, I get nervous when I automatically do it, so I wanna make sure everything, my tooth comb, 'cause when I automatically do it, the system will automatically generate that, and I won't have to manually do it all, but if I have to make a correction, it's kind of a pain to go and correct it in two different years, in two different reports on two different years. So if I correct something on the expense side, and the balance is different, but I've already moved the balance over to '16, I need to correct it in the expenses for '15 and for '16, then correct it on the balance sheet for '15 and for '16. So it becomes a little, it takes a lot of little journal entries to do those.
But I think just, just for the folks at home, I mean, our revised budget was $15,001,23, and actual is $15,055, so there's like $67,000 difference on a $15 million budget. Granted, we made adjustments and all that, we may have to make more, but that's pretty darn close, so, I mean, I think a lot, a lot of credit goes out to the department heads and the, and the folks here at Town Hall for working through the year and coming out that close.
Now, the $67,000 will be decreased by the $7,000 in the Board of Health...
Right.
That we're gonna carry forward to demolish the cat trailer.
Cat trailer, but still, it's darn close.
Correct? Are we still gonna do that?
My understanding is...
Or the cleanup?
The receiver's gonna pay for all of that.
Oh, okay.
That was the reason we went to court and did what we did. But if it happens the way the plan is, then we will not expend any town money to clean up that mess.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, 'cause originally, no, originally was, we were gonna use the seven to clean it up, then the receiver was gonna use it, and then they weren't gonna be able to do anything with it now, and so I left the money there just for that purpose.
Oh, leave the money, because this thing is going back and forth, but the last case in court, three weeks ago or so, was the receiver has authorization to go in, clean it, and then to take and to put attachment on the cost on the property, which means we're not using town funding. And the legal expenses for this is being bored by the Attorney General's Office, not by us.
Because if I don't carry it forward, we lose it.
Right, so just let it go forward right now, in case something happens.
Okay.
'Cause court's court.
Okay.
You know, but if it goes the way it should go, the receiver will take and clean up the property, put a lien on the property, and if the heirs to the property don't pay the bill, then the receiver will petition the court to auction the property for all costs incurred, including back liens that the town has on the property.
Mm-hmm.
But this will take several months to go through the court.
That's fine, I just don't wanna put the money back where it came from, and then we don't, we need it next year, and then you have to reappropriate it.
It must be going forward, because nobody's calling me to appear in court to help them with anything.
That's how you tell.
That's how I tell. If they start calling, get to court, then I know there's something wrong. including back liens that the town has on the property. But this will take several months to go through the court.
That's fine, I just don't wanna put the money back where it came from, and then we don't... We need it next year, and then you have to reappropriate it.
It must be going forward, because nobody's calling me to appear in court to help them with anything.
That's how you tell.
That's how I tell. If they start calling, get to court, then I know there's something wrong.
Anything else from this side of the table? As I'm... As we're talking, I'm just thinking of this. This is really the first full year where we've had a town administrator, finance committee, the treasurer, and the town accountant really working well, gelling well together, so I think this is a great accomplishment. So I just wanna reiterate that with our thanks, and again, to the department heads who did a great job. So you wanna go on to fiscal year '16 now? And she's already up there. So we're only six weeks into it, so hopefully there's not too many surprises here. Is there anything, Vicki, that you particularly wanna comment on this, or is it too early to...
I... You know what, to be honest, I haven't really ventured to investigate any of this yet. Only if issues had come up when Joyce was paying bills, you know, we would kinda talk about it and whatnot. But there's nothing... There is one thing in here I need to fix, is the Halloween storm debt.
Yeah.
That needs to go on the balance sheet. But I haven't really looked at these, because I've been trying to focus on, trying to get '15 squared away first.
And now, yeah, workman's comp is way up there. Do we prepay that, Heather, workman's comp, or is that...
Well, we have a payment we do at the beginning of the year, like general insurance.
Yeah, so that's what...
But if you notice, it's only, I think it was $33,000, and we budgeted $45,000, which actually reflects from the notion of switching insurance companies.
Okay.
And we also have additional, in case we have to pay any claims, so...
Okay, so that looks good. Yeah, there's nothing that really stuck out.
John, you asked me to remind you, you have a hearing at 6:30.
Yes, we have a hearing at 6:30. Okay, anything else, Vicki? From the board?
I... No, you know, I'm just trying to get '15 squared away, I'm waiting for some information from some people, you know, reconciliations. I can't reconcile their numbers till they're done with their stuff. And then hopefully, you know, I think it went pretty smooth with people giving me their bills for the end of year. You know, a few department heads were off during that last period, so it took a little teeth pulling to get them, and we kinda kept things open a little bit later, but all in all, we didn't have too much that we had to accrue or encumber for the year, so...
Okay. Okay, thank you. See you next month again.
Well, and again, if you see something on here that looks funny, just either send me an email, or email Heather, or we can talk about it, you know, at this point in time or whichever.
Yeah, I don't think any of us have an issue with contacting you.
No, no, not us.
Thanks. Okay, 6:30?
Poll hearings.
Pardon?
Poll.
Yep. Yeah, we have a hearing on a joint application submitted by Eversource and Verizon for a poll on Lyon Street. For those who weren't here before, I'm John Martin, the vice chair. Liz Moulton's out tonight, so I'll be running the hearing here. First one is a poll hearing. Purpose of the hearing is to hear from the joint petitioners regarding the proposed poll locations. We're now gonna open the town meeting public hearing on August 11th pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 166, Section 22, for a joint petition of Eversource and Verizon, New England, Inc., requesting permission to locate a line of poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures at the following public ways. Lyon Street, to place one jointly owned pole approximately 120 feet northerly of the intersection with Gunn Road, and relocate one existing pole approximately 30 feet southerly of the intersection with Gunn Road on Plan 6A421151. The reason is to facilitate installation of new electric circuit. We note for the record that the hearing was posted in Town Hall on July 8, 2015. It was advertised in the local newspaper on July 28 and August 11. All the butters were notified by mail. So we'll begin with the applicant Verizon Eversource. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, and describe your proposal. Upon completion of the proposal, we'll take questions from the board and then from the public. At the conclusion of questions, we'll take comments from the participants in favor, and then from participants in opposition. So Eversource, Verizon...
Good evening. Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street, Southampton. I am here for Jerry Melangoski, the submitter of the petition. He is on vacation, so I'm here in his stead. Like you had mentioned, we're petitioning for two polls, one new and one replacement. The replacement poll is at the intersection of Gunn and Lyon Street. So it is at the southerly side of Gunn. Our intention is to move that pole 30 feet south, which moves it away from the intersection, moves it away from the line of sight as you're coming to the Gunn-Lyon intersection. The purpose of that is to also align with the poles going down Gunn Road. We will be coming out of the station with a new circuit. We will have a riser pole on the west side of Lyon Street. So that riser pole, along with our proposed pole at that intersection, forms a straight line down Gunn Road, which is the ideal conditions for utility lines. The straighter we can get the lines, the better. So that is for the first pole, south of the Gunn Road intersection. The second new pole is north of the Gunn Road-Lyon Street intersection, 120 feet from center of line of road. That pole is to... For the purpose of having an air brake switch, a breaker, you know, just for opening and closing the circuits, for swapping load if needed during emergency situations. It will be on the westerly side of the... I think it would be the property owner's arborvities. I wanna say they're very tall, 40 feet, so... There's another pole, maybe 40 feet away from that as well, so... Not obtrusive, not seen from the butters' yard. Like you said, we have contacted everyone, so these are all in the effort of the larger project. We were here before, the new gun feeder project, splitting up the load between East Hampton, Southampton, West Hampton, Montgomery. This is all part of that project, so...
Now, who'd you say you're representing again?
Eversource.
Eversource.
Yep. I am the original petitioner, was Jerry Melangoski. He's the designer. He's just on vacation.
And how are you involved with Eversource?
I work for Eversource.
Okay.
I am a supervisor.
Okay. And on the finance committee?
I am on the finance committee, yes.
Is there any conflict of interest here?
No. I abstain from all voting on any utility-related items. This is a...
I don't know the answer to that. I'm just asking, because I just wanna make sure, being elected official and then representing a company before the board, I'm thinking that may be a conflict of interest.
We have special municipal designations for all boards, committees, and commissions in the town that the Board of Selectmen re-enlisted a few weeks ago.
So this'll come under that? Good. I don't wanna have this go flashback later on, so it sounds like you're okay.
If it is an issue, I do have another representative here.
Nothing personal, I just wanted to bring it up. Okay. Anybody else from Verizon Eversource?
I don't think Verizon's here. They jointly own the pole, so we own and set the pole, they attach to it.
Okay.
They're the other largest buy-in for the pole. Generally, TV doesn't come to these, so...
Okay, so is there any questions from the board? No, I guess next is...
So the purpose of moving them is so you could put them in alignment?
One of them is to, yeah, to actually move the pole away from the intersection. The Gunn Road-Lyon Street intersection pole is rather close, so we're pulling it into that grassy area and aligning it with the poles down Gunn Road. The pole north of Gunn Road is a new pole to install an air brake switch on, which is just an open-close switch.
Okay.
No other questions from the board? Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to address this? Making this too easy. Okay, is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the petition? In opposition of the petition? Anybody wish to speak? No? Okay. Pardon?
Sounds good, thanks.
Yeah, I know it. Okay, we're gonna close the public participation portion of the hearing. How does the board wish to proceed on this matter? If everybody is in favor of it, or if somebody wants to make a motion in favor of it, we can do that. And if we get a second, we can have a discussion, or just go on to a full vote. So does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'm making all the motions. Go for it, Jackie.
Well, I still move when he's... Yeah, absolutely. It sounds good. If it's gonna help, you know?
So you wanna move to allow him to do it as the plan states? Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, is there any discussion from the board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There you go. Thanks for coming. So I'm gonna guess the rest of the people here for the next hearing. Next hearing is on the alcohol policy. The purpose of the second hearing is to provide an opportunity to the local establishments who will be affected by this policy, and to town departments who would be involved with enforcing this policy. We'll now open the town's public hearing on August 11, 2015, to consider the establishment of the following alcohol policy for the town of Southampton. Alcoholic beverages as used here and shall mean any type of alcoholic beverages, including wines and malt beverages. She was gonna have that up on the board. Okay, so I guess I'm gonna read this off of here. So, there she goes. You wanna put the alcohol policy up?
No, but I can.
Okay. And then I'll read it. Okay, number one, the owner and/or manager of record shall be entirely responsible for any violations or infractions of the law, these rules and regulations, and disorders or disturbances of any kind which take place on the licensed premises, whether or not they are present, including actions of employees and/or entertainers. Two, the official opening and closing hours, quote, are those that are designated on the licensee's liquor license. Three, last call shall be no later than 12:30 a.m. Any alcoholic beverages served must be consumed no later than 12:45 a.m. Four, all tables and bars must be cleared of all glasses, bottles, and containers of alcoholic beverages no later than 12:50 a.m., and all customers must be off the premises by 1 a.m. Five, licenses are not permitted to allow any patron... I'm sorry, licensees are not permitted to allow any patron or any guests to enter the premises after the official closing hour, or prior to the official opening hour posted on the license. No employee or owner shall serve any alcoholic beverages before the official opening hour or after the official closing hour. Six, owners and employees must be off the premises no later than 60 minutes after the official closing hour, provided, however, that such owners and employees may be on the premises at any time for the purpose of cleaning, making emergency repairs, providing security for such premises, or preparing food for the next day's business, or opening or closing the business in an orderly manner. No owner or employee shall consume any alcoholic beverages during working hours, provided further that any such license or his licensee or his manager shall not be prohibited from being upon such premises at any time, provided further that the employees, contractors, subcontractors shall not be prohibited from being on the premises at any time for the purpose of cleaning, making renovations, making emergency repairs, to or providing security for such premises, or preparing food for the day's business or opening or closing in an orderly fashion. End of alcohol policy. Okay. So who do we start with here? We start with the people in favor?
What about seven, eight, and nine?
I didn't see seven, eight, and nine on mine. Ah, it's off there, okay. Thank you, Charlie. Here we go. Seven, in event of any emergency that requires other than the owner and the employees on the premises after hours, you must call the Southampton Police Department, 413-527-1120. Explain the nature of the emergency. Eight, no alcoholic beverages may be served outside the licensed premises, such as a patio, roof garden, or sidewalk, lest such area is approved by the Board of Selectmen and is contained in the description of said licensed premises. If the licensed premises are to be closed for any reason or become inactive, the owner must notify the Board of Selectmen in advance, and state in said notice the reason and length of such closing. Hearing must be held for permission to be closed. No alcoholic beverage establishment licensee may close for any reason other than the following: After a request to the Board of Selectmen for closing in order to renovations and/or other special circumstances on holidays in accordance with the counter issued by the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission due to an act of nature. As we note for the record, that hearing was posted in Town Hall on August 3. All establishments were notified by mail. This is a proposal by our board, and the policy now has been read into record. We will begin with questions from the board. Okay. I'm out of breath. You need to have a question, Charlie.
Mr. Chair, can I address the board?
No, not yet. The board has to. Any questions first, from the board?
I have a quick question.
Go.
So why is it that they would have to notify us if they're gonna be closed? What would be the purpose of that?
So through the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, the purpose of having a liquor license is actually for the public. It's to benefit the public. And alcohol licenses, especially restaurants, but not excluded, package stores as well. A lot of times, in the smaller towns like we are, we have a quota, so we only have so many licenses available. I believe there's a certain terminology, and I'm not gonna get it correct, so I'm not gonna try to coin it. But the notion is that there are times where people say, "Hey, you know what, I'm gonna close the business this month. I'm gonna go over wherever you wanna go and go away." In the meantime, that license can't be taken by somebody else. It can't be used. The purpose of having the license, and the reason that grant it, is to serve the public. So if you're holding on to the license because you just wanna hold on to the license, a lot of times they're worth a lot of money, you're preventing someone else from doing the business. So again, the purpose of having the license is to serve the public. You can't serve the public if you're closed, and someone else doesn't have the opportunity to do so either, if you're simply holding on to the license and not doing anything with it.
Any other questions, Jan?
Yes and no, because I could see if, all of a sudden, one of them closes, and they're not there for a month or two. But I mean, I don't think, because it doesn't state exactly when. So if they go away, you know, that business decides to shut down for a week or two weeks, or they're gonna take, you know, 4th of July off, why would they have to ask permission of the board, or at least notify us? They should be able to put a sign on the door, say, "We're closed, gone on vacation."
This says renovation or other special circumstances, and...
I'm reading it as it's, if they're closed, they have to notify, and I think it's wrong. I'm just saying, or it should be clear.
No, our policy is saying renovations or other special circumstances. What's your take, Heather?
Well, I'm actually currently pulling up an ABCC regulation. Notice to all retail licenses, the ABCC announces on October 1, 2004, it will launch a compliance initiative to identify all existing retail licenses issued pursuant to Section 12, which is your restaurants and bars, and Section 15, which is your package stores that are not being actually operated. Any licensee that does not comply with its obligations to conduct the licensed business and holds a so-called, quote-unquote, "pocket license" will be subject to enforcement action by the commission. Licenses are reminded that Mass General Laws 138, Section 77, provides that the commission may cancel the license of any license holder who ceases to conduct the licensed business, that is, any license holder who closes the business or stops doing business. Please note that when one applies for a license, they actually specify all the hours of operation in the business that will be open. If such modifications should occur, moving forward on a permanent basis, they should submit something to the Board of Selectmen to have their hours amended on their license. Licensees should be conducting the licensed business on all days authorized by the license. Any licensee not conducting the business as of the date of this notice should immediately comply with its obligations by, one, operating the license on the days and at the location authorized under the license, or, two, filing the appropriate application to transfer the location of the license to a location where the licensee will comply and operate the licensed business, or, three, filing the appropriate application to transfer the ownership of the license to a person that will comply and operate the license on the days and at the location authorized under the license. Any licensee who is complying with its obligations to conduct the licensed business and does not close the business or stop doing business will not be subject to this commission compliance initiative to enforce.
So my question is, do you have regular policy?
Could you go up to the microphone, please, so the people at home can hear you?
I can't recognize him until you're done with your select board members.
Yeah, and it's true, I'm not... We've gotta be done with the select board, so if you just... You can stay up there, that's okay. You can stay up there, I'm sorry.
So the way I read it, it says that if they're closed for any reason... Number nine, if they are closed for any reason. That's the way I'm reading it, so if they go on vacation, they have to say something to us. I... I, I disagree with that. I understand that they're, the whole pocket license, fine, so you know what, OPA decides to close and not tell anybody, and they're gonna hold off, and they're gonna sit on that license until the highest bidder comes around.
So you're using "closed" in the broadest sense?
Exactly, and I don't know if anybody else is reading it that way, but I'm reading it that way.
Okay, so...
And I don't own any of these businesses, so I have no financial interest in it. I just think it's wrong on how it's written. And I think if we wanna have a regulation, it should be a little more clear.
I, I agree with her, that, the way it reads. A suggestion, just to throw on the table for discussion, would be how about over a period of seven days? In other words, that if they close for over seven days, then they have to notify us?
But if you're going along with what Shannon's saying, which I, I understand, if you close for two weeks even, you're, you're, you've got a problem.
Because the way it sounds to me, it's, it's if it's an extensive a period of time. So if they go to Greece for a month, that's not excessive. Six months goes by, and the doors have been closed, the grass is overgrown, and there's snow piled up to the door, we have a problem. They get a letter, 30 days, they get another letter, after that, we pull the license. Simple as that.
So then the question becomes, how many days is your threshold?
So I don't know. I'd say if you're, if you're gonna go to Greece, or France, or Ireland, and they're gonna be gone for 30 days, I think that's okay. Put a sign on the door saying, sorry, you know what, and you know what? Everybody knows these businesses. They know they're open all the time. But if they have an emergency and they have to fly off to god knows where, and they're gonna be gone for a month, I say you at least give them 30 days where they don't have to say anything to us. Put a note on the door saying, we'll be back.
So are you proposing that over 30 days, they need to notify us?
Then we should be notified, yes. 'Cause then maybe there's something we can do to help protect them.
Anybody else on the Board have a comment on that?
I have no problem with the 30 days.
Jackie?
Uh, I think 30 days is, is fair, but I'd love to hear what the public has to say about it.
Well, that's the next, yeah, next step. Heather?
Hi. So I, I have a couple of things on this. Number one, first of all, there's some pieces in this policy that aren't really, you know, the Board getting to decide what they wish and what they wish not to be the master and a law. It's more just a replication of the information for the purposes of the licensee to refer to it in reference. This is the pocket license law. So the Board can say, you have 30 days. ABCC gets wind, they're pulling the license on their own because they're enforcing the law. Um, the second thing is, I totally disagree. I think if the, perhaps you get rid of the hearing concept, and I don't think anyone would have an objection, but they should notify the Board. Here's one of the reasons why. Police officers are patrolling by. All of a sudden, there's activity at the bar. What's wrong with that? There's activity at the bar every night, they're open every day. They don't know they're closed.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
And I think there needs to be official notice.
It says they have to request from the Board for closing. They have to request.
Right.
They should not request anything from us within a certain time period.
Well, I think that's what we're talking about now, and we can amend it to maybe, say, 30 days, or they still have to notify...
Just like you put a note on the door, you just call up and say, hey, Heather, we're closed for a month.
Well, we'd have to have a policy on that, but I mean, we wanna make it so that the businesses can deal with it in a reasonable manner without waiting for us outside the doors, so...
I, I think the only concern I have on this one, and I have no problems with saying, you know, you don't need to have a hearing unless it's for a period of time that you're gonna close. I think notifying the town of the closure is very important. I think, again, where all this comes back to is the notion that the purpose of having a liquor license is to serve the public. That's why the liquor licenses are there, that's why you get a certain number of quota. And I know it seems silly sometimes, but there's actually, you know, there could be an argument that you're not serving the public when you only have four out of five vendors open.
Yeah, but I think the, the, the other reason behind this is we wanna be reasonable with our, our businesses in town, because they're here, they're serving us, they're part of the town. So I think we need to come up with something that meets the law, but also allows them to go about their business without harassment, I guess, but... So if there's no more questions from the Board, I'm gonna open it to the public, 'cause I'm, there's a few people out there that'd like to speak.
I, I have one more question. Do you think the Board of Health should be involved in that, 'cause it has to do with the restaurants? No? No input on them?
It's not a sanitary issue, though.
No?
If, if I, Boards of Health have been instructed for many years that alcohol operations fall on their selectmen, they don't fall on our Board of Health.
That was from the experienced voice.
I was just asking.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair? Good evening. I'm Ed Batchelder, Bat, um, 12 Parsons Way, Southampton. I'm a former selectman, sat in your chair. And I'm a little confused. When I read the article today, um, this has all been discussed so many different times over the years, and it was our role as Boards of Selectmen to have discussions on allowing 2 o'clock permits on special occasions, not reducing and interpreting ABC laws. And I think you're gonna run into a legal jam and legal expenses, um, because, uh, my past experience is, the state already has written the law, and we can't interpret it, because we're, we can't trump the state as a town.
Correct.
So it's gonna be a legal nightmare for us as a town, which I don't think we can afford, and just let the ABC regulations take place. And the enforcement order, where the clarification has to happen is, when is a reasonable time for a patron to leave an establishment? And it's gotta be so-called reasonable, which is also very vague. But that's how it's written. And as far as the closure stuff, to call you guys for permission to close a business, if I had to come here to close my business, because I, for, I don't care, I can close my business at any time and for whatever sake. And it's, sure, I'm open to the public, but that doesn't mean I have to stay open 24 or 365 days a year. I think what the, what the interpretation is, it has to do with, with somebody that's parking a, a license to operate. That's totally different than coming here to get permission to close for renovations, or, or, or close to go on vacation, or just say, you know what, I'm sick and tired of seeing the public, I need a break. I don't think that, I think that should be totally striked, as far as, uh, part of your, your, or put in language as pertaining to pocket license regulations. Or I would have the whole thing totally deleted and say, look at the ABC. There are, they wrote the laws for our town. And when there's a violation, Town of Southampton's Police Department comes in and exercises their order. And it's as simple as that. I just think we're trying to make a mountain out of a molehill, and the interpretation is, it's already done. And that's, I think, how we should stand. I wouldn't disrupt anything, and I do have, um, I do have something to say on how long and when somebody's open and closed, and when a patron has to leave, and when tables gotta be cleared. Have you guys looked at an ABC license on a patron in this town lately? It's clearly indicated on the license when they can sell alcohol as a starting point and an ending point. So if the ending point says 1 o'clock on their license, and that's an ABC-issued state license, I don't think this town can go in and say, sorry, you have to stop serving at 12:30. But, I mean, have you seen, have you seen a license? Maybe these gentlemen might have one with them, but I think that's what you, or the, the Town of Southampton's Police Department, needs to go by. And it just has to boil down to what's reasonable when somebody has to get out of an establishment. And I don't want people driving there on the, on the road at, you know, 3:00 in the morning and 2:30 or whatever. But if somebody orders a glass of wine at 1 o'clock in the, in the morning, and you want them, or at 10 minutes of one in the morning, they're not gonna drink in 10 minutes, unless they shouldn't be, you know, drinking, period, because that's ridiculous. So I think common sense with your Board is gonna be helpful for us as townspeople. Just use your head, use common sense, use practicality, and just let the ABC, they wrote the laws for us. All we have to do is enforce them. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak from the public? Now, on the licenses, as I remember them, there's opening and closing hours.
8:00 a.m. to 1 p, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. is the serving hours on most days of the week, with the exception of Sundays when it's noon, um, unless it's prior authorized to be 10.
Right. So opening and closing hours fall in line with the serving hours, correct?
So, uh, ABCC, Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, they simply state that a community may serve until the, um, time on the license unless it's otherwise regulated by the town's policies. There's no specifications as to one, what 1 o'clock means. The reason this whole piece came up in the first place was there was a lot of confusion and frustration on all sides. The police department would drive by, because that's what they're assigned to do. It would be after 1 o'clock, they would stop, there'd be patrons in the bar, there may, may not be alcohol on the bar, and there'd be concern, and they would be, police were interpreting that as reasonably against the regulations of 1 a.m. being the last time it was served. Problem we were running into, you talk to ABC, you talk to Town Council, unless you physically see that drink being served after 1 a.m., it's a problem. The reason this all came up was the idea to provide expectations to all parties involved. Provide expectations to the restaurants. Do these have to be the times? No. But these are the guidelines based on the times of what the police were currently enforcing. They were enforcing, if you're there after 1, if you're, there's a drink on the bar after 1, that it's a violation. The purpose to have clear expectations on this piece is that everyone can follow them. The restaurant owners know what is allowed, what isn't allowed, and the police know what they're enforcing. 'Cause right now, anything that comes through is gonna be thrown out, because there's no way to enforce. How does one know one was served at 12:59? How does one know that one wasn't served at 1:05? There, there's no way. It's gonna be discontent on all parties. It's like having teenagers and not giving them any rules, but saying you just violated them.
Yeah, I mean, what we're trying to do is make it clear for you folks and us. We're not trying to antagonize anybody, obviously.
This is clear.
Yeah. Go ahead, you have something?
Here's an actual copy of, of, an alcohol permit, okay? And I'm gonna read on here, it's clear, just as plain as day. The hours during which alcoholic beverages may be sold, not served, okay? Sold. Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 1:00 a.m. Sunday, 12:00 noon to 1:00 a.m. That's on the license. Now, if they serve at 10:00 after, then that's a violation. But 12:30, they're in, they have every power in their, in their, in their arsenal, right here. They can serve at, at, at 1:00 p.m., period.
Actually says unless the town has other policies, and that's what we're trying to figure out if it's worth...
Everybody has the same policy.
Yeah.
And we're lucky we're at 1 o'clock, 'cause all the surrounding communities are too.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Continue from what we discussed, and then tell everybody. My name is Tony Rizos.
Tony Rizos, we call him Tony, yeah. And I'm one of the owners of OPA OPA. I live in Tugger, Coates, Southampton. And I do business here in town the last 27 years, starting from there back in 1991. Let me understand, continue from Heather, what she was saying. There is confusion with the police department. So is there any complaints from the police department after 1 o'clock, people serving alcohol?
Yes.
Yes.
We've had numerous ones that have been, if the Board recalls correctly, this policy derived, um, moments after we actually had, I think it was four or five, three, between three and five complaints from numerous establishments from the police department at potential serving after 1 o'clock.
From the police department, or from, or, or from public to police department?
I have actual physical police complaints.
So it wasn't from the public to the police, it was from the police to you, correct? To understand the philosophy?
It was police complaints, official plates...
From the public?
No. The police department wrote up reports. I have three. They were doing patrolling. They didn't get a call that Sally called Peter to come check.
So the police, all of a sudden, they say after 1 o'clock, let's go check the restaurants, correct? That's what happened?
Well, not all of a sudden, they, they patrol.
Compliance checks. They're called compliance checks, yes.
They take after 1 o'clock, so that was the police call. And I'm assuming it was from the chief, saying, today, let's go, you know, hire to the, to his officers and go after 1 o'clock to see who is, who, who, what establishment sold drink after 1, correct?
Uh, we're not sure of that. We can't...
I am not the police chief. I'm not in his head, so I can't answer that question.
You know, I, I don't want it to go, and that came, you know, I'm trying to find out it was harassment, because to come to my place, first of all, let me tell you something, that's my livelihood. And reading over here that an owner or employee should have any alcohol beverage during working hours. My, my kids growing to notice school, they'll come after lunch to see me. My wife, and we'll have a glass of wine together at the dinner together. That's how my life was. It's not restaurant work for me, it's just a business, maybe that's her way. You see it, or the police chief will see it. Mine was my livelihood. So everything was going there, yes, my employees would be my responsibility, my police was my, like, my kids, and they still are. And my whole life, it's my life. It's not, I don't have life in the restaurant. So if Tom Whiteley or Ed Bartlett will come to see me as a friend, he will come to a restaurant to see me. He will not come to my house. Because that's where I spend from 6 o'clock sometime in the morning, and sometimes we're starting brewing beer since 6 o'clock in the morning, to going to 4 o'clock or 5 o'clock, 23 hours. And that was my, that, that's different license, by the way. Pub allows you to do that. That's different license who were carried. Also brewery license, which were brewery, were the, for 6 o'clock, because our pallet is so fresh, that's what we do. We're tasting with our brewers, with our employees, we're tasting beer. That's what we do. We'll go there at 6 o'clock, actually we'll meet our brewmasters, and we're tasting beer. And now over here, you tell them you cannot do that, either you or my employees, which are my brewers, you cannot do that, because they proposed, that's what tells over here. It frustrates me. Frustrates me, because I'm going to, uh, you know, I, I have in my mind, my business, casinos coming in a couple of years, Capitaine Westfield, they have 2 o'clock, I have 1 o'clock license, Eastham to Northham, they have 2 o'clock, I have 1 o'clock license. Casinos coming in town, they're gonna take all my, you know, try to take business away from every round town. And all of a sudden, I have, I see as harassment, from my own town, with, instead of see support, see how can I help the business? Oh, you gotta close half hour early, you cannot drink, or you cannot have friends that, that buy you drinks inside your place. You, you have to call for vacation, or close in any time, or for a renovation. If I have to have electrician do 3 o'clock, it says pretty clear, I gotta call the police. So if my electrician wants to come 3 o'clock, I gotta call the police to do that? Is that Heather, that's what it says? I'm asking Heather if that says, if 3 o'clock, I have a medicine, I'm calling my electrician, do I have to call the police?
John, he should be interested.
Does that say that?
Yeah, on that, the reason for that is in case there's a fire or something there, or electrical issue, they wanna make sure they're aware of it.
And I'm asking the question, if 3 o'clock, my electrician shows on my place to fix...
3 o'clock in the morning?
In the morning.
Yeah.
Do I have to call the police?
Yeah, well, according to the policy, you'd have to call the police. Just let them know there's activity going on there, because...
Did you see that right? Did you see that right? If I tell you 3 o'clock, and your house, you have a medicine, you gotta call the police, did you see that right?
If, if they're working there 3 o'clock in the morning, you should call, call the police, just let them know some activities going on there.
And did you see that as an individual, and as a term, did you see that right, yourself, personally? Did you, is that right? Is it priva...
I, I think that would be fine, because it lets people know what's going on, and they don't think somebody's breaking in or stealing from you. You know, they'll, they'll stop by. Again, let's go back. I think just by talking to you folks here, this is a, a proposal, and by having the public come in, we wanna hear what you think. And I know after listening to a few of you, I think we should go back and, and revisit a lot of this and go over it again. But we're here not to harass you folks, we're here to make sure that on the police department's side and on our side, there's a policy that we can live with, and on your side, there's a policy too. You going up, you're making beer, you've gotta drink beer, you sit down with your family, you know, that makes a lot of sense, when you say that. So that would have to be either rewritten or stricken in my mind. So it's, it's not antagonistic, it's, it's something we wanna make sure you can live with, and, you know, the rest of the town can live with too.
I think the other thing we have to remember is, we haven't had complaints outside of people being there after 1. There's never any problems, I've never heard of any commotions, there's never been any serious problems. So I think for us to do a whole new policy beyond the extent of their license that clearly lists on when they can be in operation, we're gonna micromanage, and we're gonna get them upset. When they're really just, I mean, they're, they're serving us, as the townspeople.
But again, that's why we're having the...
Yeah, absolutely. We should be way more supportive, and, and even if we threw this out to a committee to help them draft something that would be more clear, or maybe even not have an additional policy on top of the requirements that they have to already comply with on their license.
So I, I think, I wanna let you finish, and anybody else from the public finish, and then we can decide.
In a minute, just going by when, Mr. Chairman, when you go and buying the list, and the number two, it says the official opening and closing hours are those that designate on the licensed liquor license. And then, I don't understand if the number two, and number three and four overrides it. I don't understand why, I mean, is number two who says, whatever the official opening and closing hours are, on the license, which that's what we have right now, and then it goes to three and four? I don't understand which one is right, the number two, three, or four?
Well, number two is, is right, that's on the license.
So if it's number two is right, why, how number three and four can be right?
Number three and four are thoughts that we all put into a policy to respond to some of the issues that the police department had, in order for them to be, be able to identify what's going on, and whether everybody's... what's going on and whether everybody's meeting the law. You know, whether that's going to be something that we keep in there or not, I don't know.
Again, the police department, it's got to be fair and reasonable.
Yep.
Based on the license. So, if the license is 1:00, then fair and reasonable would be like either 1:45 or 1:30.
But again, reasonable to you, to you or, you know.
The police department or somebody in this town or somebody is that helping the establishment that they're not going to comply with their license and say, I'm not going to serve you at 1:00.
See, I don't look at it that way at all. I think it's.
And if they do, take their license.
You're going to need to get up there if you want to keep talking.
Correct. And people that know us in town, like I say, we're 27, the last 27 years in town, would not try to make a business at 1:00. I was the one in favor not to have 1:00 back in the meeting 10 years ago, not to have, you know, at the time, by Zana's was asking for 2:00, I was in favor to stay 1:00. So, I'm not trying to sell any drinks after 1:00. And I would like to keep what I have and not to have somebody harassing me, my business, and give me less from what I have. And try to survive on this economy and the way that things are right now.
Yeah, I think you're very clear. Hold on, just have a question for him.
No, Tony, I agree with you, but there's so many holes in this thing, it gets to the point where it's not serving any purpose. But we also realize that our police department needs some kind of benchmark as to what to do. So, we need to have some kind of a policy. I agree with you, this is not what it's going to be. But I also am searching how we can do this so that we are all on the same page with this. I'm going to recommend to the board that we table this proposal and that it go back into review.
And as part of that, maybe put a committee together with some of the establishment.
They have to be part of this.
Absolutely.
I agree. I think that's a good idea.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. And I think that's because you folks came here and expressed your thoughts. And again, it's not us against them because we go to the same places that you own, so we appreciate you coming in and giving your opinions. And Ed, same with you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
I'd like to.
Could you come up here?
My name is Gary Silva. I'm here representing the Turnhall Camp John. And we're a private, private place. It's, we're not open to the public. It's a membership thing. We're actually, our license is probably from 8:00 to 1:00. The way, like this gentleman said, it stated that we should be open from 8:00 to 1:00. There's no reason for us to be open at 8:00 in the morning, we open at noon time. If it's, there's no customers, we'll close when we close. I look at a lot of these things and, you know, they're all good ideas in theory, and most of, like, what we do, these are rules that we establish in our place and say to our bartenders, no, you cannot drink on duty when you're, when you're, when you're working. You do not serve alcohol after a certain hour, and you make sure the bar is clean, give yourself enough time. But like the gentleman said, if you serve your last drink at 12:45, and then by 12:50 you got to have everybody out, if you have 60 people in there, that's just not happening. You're going to have chaos. These things, a lot of them are great things. Like you said, we apply them to our business. They need to be. People need.
Structure.
Yeah, they need structure. And I think you guys have the right idea, but you're going about it the wrong way. I think, like this gentleman said, the A B C established, and I mean, that's gone through the courts, and I don't think anybody wants to get into a court war, but that's all been proven, and that's actually what works. As far as, you're talking about a pocket license? Yeah. If someone's just holding a license and the establishment is not open, I agree, they should contact you and say, we closed for this reason, we just can't make money, whether or not you can force them to give up the license. Because these licenses are granted, but they're still paid for. If that person buys that license for a year, I don't know if he has the right to keep it for the year or not. But if he certainly is closed, you have the reason to take it back at the end of the year and not renew that license. And then if he's holding out for money, he's not going to get anything because he's not going to have a license. So, there's so many different issues that we're working on here, but I think you're on the right page. Maybe get some of these bar owners together, sit down and find out what works. But I think you're going to find out that most of the bars are already doing very much what you're talking about here. And, you know, I, and I have no interest in our bar. I'm strictly the president, not financially connected at all, so, you know, they seem like reasonable things, but to, if you were actually running a bar, you would know that this won't work. And the police will be at your place every night, and that's not what this is for. This is to make it a little simpler, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, basically, we need to make it a little simpler, a lot simpler, based on all the comments we heard. Sure, you want to get up there?
Ed Datchelder, 12 Parsons Way. When it goes to committee, if you do table it, and you need to get some advice and opinions, I would consult with the A B C themselves and say, we need to establish, or help our police department establish a timeline which is so-called reasonable if somebody's got a 1:00 license. And then you just use that as a guideline, so they're not coming in stomping, throwing people out at 10:00 after 1:00, or 10:00 of 1:00. If they think it's fair and reasonable at 1:30, then I think that's what the policy should be with the police department. If you see somebody there at 1:30 or a bunch of cars, you might want to just start doing inquiry. How many are employees? But I would go to the A B C because they've written the law for us, and it has been in court.
But they're going to say it's up to the town when you talk to them.
Again, fair and reasonable and legal is always vague.
Yep.
But just use your head, as I would say.
I think fair and reasonable is the key on that. And hearing the feedback, I think we can go to a whole different direction on that, so thank you for, you have one more, sure, go ahead.
I'm Mary Hemo, I'm one of the owners of Black Birch Vineyard. We are a farmer winery. Listening to this discussion here, I'm assuming that this does not apply to us pretty much at all. We do our tastings in our farm building and in our farm property, and we all set? Or should we be part of this discussion?
Well, I don't even think you guys are open till 1:00 AM.
No, well, but there are other things in here.
I would say the biggest thing is if, you know, this actually, you would be a great example of this. So, on your license, you have specific days and specific times when you're open. Because we had this conversation about what days, what times are you planning to be open?
Right.
Open communication, back and forth, and you said, these are the days, these are the times, and that's what it says on your license. Monday, 3:00 to 6:00, Tuesday, 1:00 to 5:00, whatever it may be. And that's, I think, where the basis of this policy is coming from, the notion of, you know, you don't have to be open from 8:00 to 1:00 every single day of the week. But if you're going to have a consistent, regular set of hours, you need to have that on your license. It needs to be communicated to the board, it needs to be communicated to the public. So, I think that's in compliance. I think the only thing that would really apply here is, you know, if you're going to shut down and decide, we're not going to do anything for a period of time, or, you know, maybe you need to come back to the board and say, we need to modify our hours for the summer. We're on vacation, we're not here. But I would say that's, that would be the relevant part.
But when you're developing this policy, everybody's good with how we operate business. That's what I want to know.
Yeah, and I don't think we're not good with how any establishment operates, just that the police needs a clearer guideline of when they can go in and out. Because like one of the gentlemen said, they don't want to be harassed, and the police don't want to do that. They're just going in and checking on what they think they should. So, some clearer guidelines, I think, are important. And it's obviously that this is overzealous, so we're going to have to scale it back, talk to some of the folks. But thank you. Any more folks from the public? Sure.
My name is Ephimios Rizos, and I live in Tuggeri Court, and I'm part of the Opa-Pa group. Suggestion, first of all, the A B C, and how Heather said, is to benefit the public, has so many rules and regulations, to try to have more, maybe make it worse. We have like two papers, they have hundred papers, and already they cover everything. Even how you say, they have for the closing, if the business, three, four months, they have hard time, they cannot make whatever, A B C reason, they're going to have, the end of the year, they have to come back, they're going to pay or not, it's very clear. Now, me to go for a month vacation to Greece, and not the good, something emergency happened or that, come to us the board, I can close that, it's a joke. So, already, A B C has the policy rules, and very clear. The same with the license, serve until 1:00. A little confusion is when the public to be cleared out. I think, like everybody said, if we put down some logical time, 1:00 to have the last drink, 1:30 or 2:00 should be out. And anyway, my business, our business after 12:30, or my brother maybe don't sell any drink, how you say. But like himself and me, I'm there from 6:00 in the morning, or 8:00, and it's 12:00, and my friend comes to visit me. And somebody comes 1:00 to ask me, get out, get out, it's a emergency, you're going to police. We live here, we support the town, the town supports us, my kids grew up here, and how you say, we thank the town for all that it's given us, we're blessed. I went back to Greece, the banks was closed, it was very bad, so I'm blessed that I'm here. But let's make our life much more easier, simpler. We're not like Russia, they used to do the old times, if you want to move another place, you have to ask the police. If you want to do something, that was, how you say, gestapo. We're a free country, the best country in the world, the best city in America, the best water in America, so.
And the best beer, right?
Everybody have good time, and always we had good relationship with police, we want to have good relationship with police, just as communication, to communicate and everybody to.
Yeah, we're just trying to clarify, like you said, maybe if it's, you close at 1:00 by 1:30, that's something, you know, we can put it on a committee and consider it. I think we need those ideas. So, it's, again, it's not us against you, we want to make sure everybody knows what the rules are, and we'll make them as simple as possible, especially after hearing from everybody. So, we appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? Last call?
Last call.
Very, that was bad, John. That was really bad.
I'm sorry.
I do have one more question.
Last call.
If you decide to go on with this, with this proposal, even to modify it, how will you notify us if we want to be involved?
We will do it at a Board of Selectmen meeting, so it'll be, we're putting a committee together, we're going to be doing this, we're looking for volunteers, could you contact such and such? Pardon? No, we would do it publicly at a meeting. I'm not sure if we put it in the paper or not. John? A thought?
If we, if we, if we only have the establishments in town, I think we can send a courtesy letter to them that we're putting a committee together, and if they have an interest in participating, please contact the town administrator.
Okay, but we'll also have to announce it in case there's people from the public that might be interested.
Oh, I totally agree with you, but we're getting ourselves.
I agree with you, Charlie, as a courtesy to our.
We haven't done a motion or anything on this right now, and you're already deciding how you're going to formulate it.
Yeah.
I'm not deciding anything, Charlie, I'm just discussing it. So, any more from the board or the public? Okay, so can we have a motion? I think you started with one before, Charlie.
I moved that the present policy be tabled, and that the board revisit this by establishing an ad hoc committee of people that are involved in this issue, and that the town administrator be instructed to notify all the license holders in the town of this committee and ask if they have an interest in being part of the committee.
You hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any more discussion?
John, can I just add something?
Sure.
One of the requests that've come in from Mike Goyet, because people may not be here, but they communicate via this wonderful technology system. He had asked actually that this could be continued, not tabled, but continued for the purposes of the police department reviewing the comments that have been submitted because they're all very helpful, and then continuing this hearing again in a month or so. I'm concerned as well about tabling it. I'm also concerned about the ad hoc committee. The reason being that, again, this is a liquor license. Liquor licenses are extremely serious, and they're something that are regulated by this board. The Board of Selectmen is the local licensing authority. This is their job. Local licensing authorities don't often sub out the work of putting the policy together. I think based on all the comments that came in, times can be modified, the policy can be shortened to hit and address exactly what the major concerns are and the reasons, but I don't necessarily think putting this to an ad hoc committee is going to get us to a resolution anytime in the near future. It's just something that will never happen.
Okay, so we're still open for discussion. What do you folks think?
I think that because these are businesses in town, I think they should be afforded an opportunity to be on a committee to try to develop this. Obviously, if a few months go by and we see nothing moves, we as the Board of Selectmen can change this. But I think that we need to extend that courtesy to them. I also think the police department needs to be heard on this also.
They just want direction. They really do. They just want to, you know, go by whatever it is that is decided. They want to know what time they should be going by. And there's nothing wrong with that, but the only thing is, is we keep referring to it as these liquor licenses. We're not in Springfield. These are not just watering holes. I mean, they're establishments with families that go there, they're restaurants, people wine and dine, they eat late, they hang around. We have to stop looking at like, they're just bars. And I think that, I mean, at least that's the way I'm taking it. It just sounds like we're just talking about 16 bars in a neighborhood, and it's not. I mean, as far as I know, I've been in there, and I've never gone in there just to drink. I go in there to eat, to socialize, and the whole nine. To take that into consideration. Because I feel like we're like putting them in a whole different category, the way we keep saying, oh, it's the liquor license, the liquor license. You got to look at the whole picture.
Absolutely. Okay, so I'll make a comment, then we have a motion in a second. But to me, if you have an ad hoc committee, they can just come back to the board with their recommendation, and it's the board's final decision to make at that point, so we won't lose control over anything. So, I personally don't have an issue with it, and having the police department involved as well as the owners of the establishments is fine. So, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, unanimous.